I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands on my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common sense. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas run state, under God, one and indivisible.
In West County Commissioners Court, today's September fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, nine AM, current time is nine oh eight. Item number three, public testimony, is there anybody in the public that would like to address the court at this time? If there's none, we'll go on to agenda item number four, to consider salary and personnel expenses agreements. This reason we're here today is, I guess we can say, once a year, once we release the proposed budget, it has everybody's salary on it. And if there's any elected official that has any questions or wants to address salary issues or personnel issues in their budget, they file a grievance. And once they file a grievance, we get this grievance committee together, and it comprises elected officials and other members of the county plus grand jurors. And the way you're selected is your name is put into a bucket, just randomly chosen, and we go by number one to how many there are. And you guys are the lucky ones today. So what we'll be hearing today is his grievance and his basis for his grievance, and then we will make a decision whether we accept his grievance and go with his request or not. That being said, is there anything else that I missed that needs to be said?
Just for the record, Nora, do you have the names of the three grand jurors?
Yes, sir.
And you can make a record of that, and then just note that five of the six elected officials with President, with Mr. Guerrero, may be the only one asked, just to make sure that we have the four of them.
Yes, sir.
Can I do a little roll call?
Yes, sir.
Okay. County judge, I'm here, Sheriff, here, Andrew Bueno, okay. County attorney, Mark Guerra.
Here.
County treasurer, Mark Ramigas.
Here.
County tax assessor-collector, Mary Lasano.
Here.
County clerk, J.C. Perez.
Here.
And district clerk, David Guerrero.
There are some.
And please state your name for the court.
Felix Valle.
Felix what?
Valle.
Valle. Spell your last name.
B.A.L.L.E.
That's right.
Danny Lopez.
The last three individuals were selected to the grand jury pool.
And all of y'all started as grand jurors at some point in two thousand and twenty-three?
Sir.
We really appreciate y'all coming. Sometimes it's very hard, moving back to the court at this time. Okay, anything else needs to be addressed before we get started?
We need to explain as far as numbers.
Well, it's, yeah, there's only, it's gonna be, the judge is gonna make his case, and then we discuss and vote. We won't be able to get to nine, obviously, so we're not gonna have a mandatory recommendation to the Commissioners' Court. But if he gets six affirmative votes or more, six, seven, or eight, then we make the recommendation to the Commissioners' Court positive, and then they can still vote on it, yes or no? The only way it's mandatory on the Commissioners' Court is if nine of us are here and everybody votes yes.
Okay, five or less?
Five or less, yeah, then it's not approved, then the Commissioners don't vote.
Five or less not approved, and then if they get five or more?
Six.
Or six or more?
Six to eight, if six to eight of the committee members vote to recommend an increase, the Commissioners' Court shall consider the recommendation. So if all nine vote to recommend, which we can't do because we're missing David, then it's shall. You all have to give it to him, Chris, but we're not gonna be able to get to that at court.
Okay. That being said, Mr. Schmidt, Judge Schmidt.
Judge Matthew Schmidt, precinct three. Do you'd like me to hand out my grievance to everyone, or is that not?
Everyone got it, okay.
Let me just hand one out there.
Like I said, my name is Judge Matthew Schmidt, precinct three. I'm here in regards to agreements that I filed in regards to my salary. Took office first of January two thousand and twenty-three, and been making, started out at forty-four and some change. Last year, got the raise that everyone got in the county, which bumped it up to forty-five, five-eight-seven. I'm here to request, and hopefully y'all can consider me starting with the other new JPs that started at the same time I did, which is JP five and six, which are currently making fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. I'm currently making forty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. I can briefly go through my grievance letter. All three of us judges took office at the same time, making around six thousand, less than both of them. I feel that we should start out at the same pay and work ourselves up from there. Just to be clear, I'm not saying to take anything away from anyone, just to be fair. We also have the same job duties and responsibilities. My workload has been extremely high since I've taken office in two thousand and twenty-three. We've hit record numbers for monthly revenue, surpassed last year's revenue by twenty thousand already with four months to go. Thirty-six inquests performed, over one hundred and eighty-six warrants issued, twelve interlock devices installed, over fifteen ankle monitors installed, and six hundred ninety magistrations performed. Lastly, I've also helped out JP five with truancy in Orange Grove. Regardless of the population of our areas, as you can see, we all stay busy in our own ways and help each other out when needed. Thank you for your consideration on this matter. And also, we've done over thirteen debt claims, over nine small claims, over three peace bond hearings, over five evictions, and three property hearings. Does anyone have any questions for me?
You did that last statement. That's not on this, right?
No, sir, this is in addition to. Since I've been in office, we've had over thirteen debt claims, nine small claims, three peace bond hearings, five eviction cases, and three property hearings. Anyone have any questions for me?
I don't have any questions. Does anybody have? Okay, all right, thank you so much. We'll ask you to leave at this time, and we'll deliver.
He doesn't have to leave.
He doesn't have to leave.
No, it's not gonna be.
Thank you, everyone.
Anybody have any questions or discussions about Mr. Schmidt's presentation? And/or any questions on what the other JPs are making? I guess I'll let everybody know what the other JPs are making and...
Just the two that, what? Just the two that he's comparing to.
Well...
Because he's only comparing to the last two that he's... He's knowing he's... So it's getting those two.
Okay. Okay, so Ms. McKenzie, she's JP precinct five, who was elected the same year he came in, she's making fifty-one, five. And Mr. Cardena, JP precinct six, he's making fifty-one, five also. And when he came, when Judge Schmidt came in, he came at forty-five. He came in at forty-five, or he came, he came in at, like, the rule forty?
Forty-four.
Forty-four and change, and then he's currently making forty-five, forty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And his grievance, your grievance, if I'm correct, that you should be where they're at?
Yes, sir. Just wondering why we didn't all start at the same. We all have this, and I hope it's not based on population, but we all have the same job duties and responsibilities, so I just feel that we all should, and Judge DeLeon and Judge Johnson, I left them to the other picture because they've been doing this for a lot longer than we have. And of course, they're entitled to be making more, but as far as all three of us starting at the same time, I feel like we should all at least start at the same rate and work ourselves up from there.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments? You have any questions, comments?
I guess I have a question. So you guys don't have a base that you start everybody at this position? My question.
No.
So they go with experience, or?
And mind you, I wasn't county judge when that happened, so I don't know exactly what the criteria was or how they figured that amount. Judge Guerra, you're here on labor.
Judge Bice and Judge Kino were both making, not significantly more, but more than the fifty thousand. When the new JPs, we had that one year, which was twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-two, when did you come in?
Twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay. So that year, we had three new judges come in, and two of them were making more than fifty thousand. So when the proposed budget came out that year, they, some, and I don't know where it happened, but by the time the proposed budget was filed, they had reduced the salary that was being paid to Luz and to Kino down to fifty thousand. JP three was below fifty thousand, so they didn't change that. They just brought Judge Schmidt in at what Karen Genali was making. Since then, we've had the one three percent increase, so three percent of fifty thousand is fifteen hundred, that's why you now see it at fifty-one, five. But, you know, that just, it happened, and the reason this was, because it was already lower than the other two.
And the other two were making higher salaries because they had been here a long time. So those are the two.
Tenure did have something.
Yeah, tenure had something to do with it, and it lowered them, the new JPs that were coming in lowered them to fifty because they had, and mind you, they had been here a long time, so throughout that time, if they had any other duties or whatever, that was included also in the salary.
Well, and that was part of the history for both of them, because at one time, Kino was the designated truancy judge for the whole county, so he had gotten a bump up at some point. Then he was no longer the truancy judge, and it shifted to Luz. So she got, I don't know if you want to call it a stipend or additional pay. Kino didn't lose his, he just didn't have to do it anymore, so he stayed higher, and then Luz went higher. And then when the new judges came in, the proposed budget reduced it to fifty thousand each.
And then they're all doing truancy now?
Well, keep it, Judge Schmidt does it anymore.
You don't do it no more?
Not as of this year, sir.
Yeah, because of, it's, Orange Grove covers both Gacharri and five.
Gacharri.
But you will note that the constables, even Constable JP for precinct three gets paid the same as Constable Dabida and Constable Adixmentis, they're all at the same salary. Bartoloz is a little bit higher because he got a stipend when Kino was doing the truancy for serving the papers related to truancy, so they had bumped him up, and he stayed, Bartoloz always stayed higher than the other four constables. And of course, one has always been compensated a little bit more because precinct one is basically two precincts in one. Half of the county is in precinct one. It's ten box, ten out of the twenty-one boxes are precinct one, that goes in one and Constable one is. So they've always been a little bit higher.
Okay. Is there any other questions or any other explanations needed? Okay.
All the constables have the same duties, and all the JPs have the same duties, so that would appeal, you know, so I don't see a problem. I think if everything, all things being equal, I think across the board, I think, you know, if they're gonna be doing the same jobs, I think I don't see a reason why he shouldn't be at the same level as the others. That's my opinion.
I'm just asking, how come you don't have truancy anymore? Why?
Because we're a rural community, and all of our kids go to Orange Grove, and Judge Chapa decided she wanted to do it by herself this year. I offered again, when the school year started, she said it's something that she could handle because she wasn't really busy with her other court stuff, so she was just mainly focused on truancy. But she knows she can call me if she ever needs anything.
I agree with Mark. I think it was just maybe an oversight that, because all three of them came in at the same time, so I would like to move to approve Judge Schmidt's request, an increase equal to JP six and JP five in the amount of fifty-one thousand, five hundred.
I'll second that motion, and I'll make a statement that... And, uh, I'll, um, I'll make a statement that, uh, for you, for you guys that don't work with him, see him every day. I, I, I do, and, uh, I don't think there was a time when we asked him to do something that he had to. He does work hard, he does, uh, throws a bone in the, uh, I, I agree with him.
On that same note, I want to say that he goes available to us at the county jail night or day. He went during the morning hours, so I'm pretty pleased with his performances. It's, he, it's the first time as a JP, he's done very well for us, uh, signing, signing warrants and also, uh, making sure that individuals that need to be, and stay in jail, he's always on our side of the matter. So therefore, I make the second motion on your first motion, which is, yeah.
I have a motion and I have a second, uh, to approve the, the increase to fifty-one five. Um, I'll take, I'm gonna take a vote, and if there's anything different, then we'll, we'll, we'll address it after the vote. Uh, or... Help me on this one, Mr. Guadalupe. The ticket vote's over, right?
Yeah, yeah, but we gotta do a record vote so we can count the numbers, 'cause, 'cause it's gotta get to six, and if it doesn't get to six, then the motion fails.
It fails right there, right? There's, there's no other thing, right? Okay, we, we, we...
It's good, though.
Yeah.
Because we gotta count numbers.
All in favor, we move.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a listing, there's no particular order on this list. I'm the first one on the list, you're gonna take the record vote? Okay, we'll take record vote, I'm the first one on the list. County Judge Pedro Pizan Junior, I vote.
But you don't, you don't, you don't vote.
I don't vote? What? You know. Okay, so, um, sheriff?
Aye.
Four?
Good.
Mr. Guadalupe?
Aye.
Mr. Lomigas?
Aye.
Mr. Lozano?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
And Mr., Mr. Guerrero's not here. Mr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
And Mr. Amaya?
Yes.
Okay. That being said, motion is granted. Um, um... And, uh, motion's granted for here. Now, since, since we didn't have the ninth, um, uh, member of this group, it's not automatically has to go to commissioners' court, or this information will be presented to the commissioners' court, and then the commissioners' court will make a decision on that. Okay. All right. That being said, is there any... Motion was granted, is there anything else that we need to discuss or anything? If not, Mr. Lomigas has a motion to, to adjourn, I have a second.
I'll second that.
I have a second. Is there any further discussion needed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank y'all very much, we appreciate you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.